All right. Good evening. It is now seven o'clock. I would like to call to order the October 27th, 2019 meeting of the City College Place City Council. Will we all please rise, face back and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads, please?
Thank you, dear and my father, that we can come and do the business of the city. We ask that you will guide us and give us the directions that we need to do what we need to do for the city. I also thank you, Father, for our excellent staff and the work they do each week. We ask this blessing in Jesus' name.
Thank you, good morning. All right. So I would like to welcome Mr. Robinson Glass from Wallerland Valley Hattie, Senior Class of American Government and Latin History. So I would like to welcome you all. Thank you so much for coming. I think this is the coolest I've seen.
Is it touch your ear?
Yes. Mr. Anderson, can you wave? Yeah, Mr. Anderson. And if we could, real quick, I appreciated the staff to introduce themselves to the students who have come to answer and then the council.
Yeah. Mike Chris Tello, I'm the City Minister right here at City College Place.
Jerry Bobbitt, Councilman.
Mike Cleveland, Councilmember.
Lauren Peterson, Councilmember.
George Knight Higgin, Councilwoman.
How many years?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years serving. And Norm Hernandez, Mayor.
Melody Selby, Councilperson.
Heather Sherman, Councilperson. And Wawa Grad.
Our newest councilperson all of a month.
And I'm also a Wawa grad.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for coming. We hope you learned a little something about how your city runs. All right. So moving on, now is the time for public comment. So if we have anybody here that would like to speak or make a comment to something that is not currently already on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and your address, and you do have three minutes to speak.
All right. My name is Laura Kelly. My address is 726 Southeast Songbird Lane, College Place, Washington, 99324.
Can you move the microphone just a little bit closer to you?
So, dear councilmembers, I'm addressing the City Council regarding Basin Disposal Incorporated's Solid Waste Rent Increase. For the public record, ordinance number 17040, removal and disposal of garbage within the city is compulsory and universal. The interlocal basin disposable agreement, which City of College Place transferred assigned the solid waste collection contract that had been with another waste hauler in January 2008 to Basin Disposable Inc. Paragraph 29 term, this contract shall be a rolling contract. That such term shall be automatically extended for one additional year at the close of each successive year in perpetuity, absent written notice of termination. Rate increase, for the duration of the contract, all rate increases shall be based on an average of the September Consumer Price Index for the urban wage earners and clerical workers and the Consumer Price Index Seattle. The minimum amount of the increase will be 1.5% and the maximum amount of increase will be 3.5%. The rate increase will only be added to the collection portion of the customer bill. The contractor will be allowed to pass on to the customer any increases in landfill tipping fees. Paragraph 29, automated system containers. The contractor shall allow residential customers to select one of the three container sizes, 32 gallon, 64 gallon, or 98 gallon. At present, College Place residents' only option of container size is 96 gallon. Please note, 32 gallon containers are grandfathered in use and receive a lower collection rate than the 96 gallon containers. Basin Disposable's webpage as of October 16th, 2019. In some areas, 60-plus and 30-plus gallon containers are available. I'm asking the City Council, please give residents the opportunity to have more control over their garbage costs. And communities with pay-as-you-throw, also known as unit pricing or variable rate pricing, residents are charged for the collection of minuscule solid waste, ordinary household trash, based on the amount they throw away. Pay-as-you-throw treats trash services just like electricity, gas, and other utilities. Households pay a variable rate depending on the amount of service they use. You cut your trash down, you cut your trash bill down. I ask the city negotiate with BDI and bring back 64 gallon container option at a lower solid waste collection rate. BDI's 10 October 9th, 2019 letter to the mayor states, "Willing to address any..."
Your three minutes are up, I'm sorry.
According to your webpage, it's five minutes that people have.
So it can be up to five minutes.
I have one more sentence. Can I finish, please? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
BDI's October 9th, 2019 letter to the mayor states, "Willing to address any other solid waste issues." Residents can take control of their trash bills if the City Council is willing to modify the solid waste collection contract on their behalf. Under variable rate pricing, residents pay only for what they throw away. Respectfully submitted, Laura Kelly. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any others that would like to step forward for public comment? Any others for public comment? All right. Seeing none, the public comment period is now closed. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the agenda for this meeting, the council minutes from October 8th, 2019, the surplus declaration by Mr. Hartman, and the surplus declaration, I guess I should have said.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
First and second. Any opposed? Here we go. The motion has passed. Oh, there we go. Again. Okay, all in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? All right.
Overly efficient, huh?
I know. I'm just moving along. I'll get that one of these days. One of these days, I'll get that. Okay, we are now to our presentation period. We have a presentation by Mr. Dietrich from the Basin Disposable regarding the annual report. Please step forward. Thank you. And if you can, use the microphone a little closer to you. Thank you.
You betcha. Mayor, I'm Derek Dietrich with Basin Disposable. Councilmembers, I have the opportunity to be in front of you to address three major topics, or I don't know if they're major, but they're topics. So the first one is a quick review of the recycling markets to address what has happened over the last year and a half. So that'll be a refresher and maybe new for some new councilmembers. The second topic will be addressing the costs associated with the unlimited collection program that we put in at the beginning of 2018. And then the third component of this will be literally the math of going through the rate adjustment so everybody can see how that is done. So that, those are the three topics. Okay, so recycling market, as everybody's no doubt aware, there's been a lot of volatility in the recycling markets, and that led to a decision at the council level to cease the curbside collection program. And so as we've always spoken, we would keep track of the market and inform the council of what is going on. And so the short recap is, in July of 2017, there were some regulatory changes in China. China consumed 50% of the recyclable commodity in the world, and they are going through some changes in their environmental laws. They recognized that wasn't what they wanted to do, and so they started implementing new programs to restrict the flow of recyclables into their country. And so that really began in 2017. March of 2018, they continued to implement new rules. Those new rules effectively in March ceased all collection of recyclable materials from outside of China. And again, at that point, 50% of the commodity had nowhere to go in the world, and so that had dramatic impacts on the recycling contracts. And to that end, this council chose to cease the curbside recycling program a number of months ago. And so that's what has happened. Looking forward, one can assume, I always use the bucket analogy, if you have a bucket, you pour water into it, and that bucket gets full, what happens to the water? Well, it overflows and it goes somewhere else. And so that's what's happened to the commodity as China shut its door. It's now flowing into India, Vietnam, other countries, but those markets are much smaller than China, and so those are now getting saturated. On top of that, there's shipping lanes that for years have been formed to deliver product to China. Since China's no longer doing it, it's disrupting the shipping lanes, and so that is in flux. All of this means that there's less opportunity to truly recycle commodity, and it means the opportunity that does remain is much more expensive. And then here's a quote that has really risen the last number of months about recycling, and a lot of people are aspirational recyclers, or they're confused. And the point is, a lot of communication that's happened in North America, particularly the West Coast, is if it looks recyclable, please recycle it. But that led to the problem that we have now. It's created a lot of contamination, and now there's a whole new paradigm where cleanliness and appropriate recycling matters more than just recycling. So with that, I thought this graph would be great to point out, in early 2018, Q, you know, let's say it was March, the council decided to cease collection of curbside. That's when it cost $131 per ton, and that's compared to, at that point, roughly $90 per ton for disposal. We can see moving forward to today, the cost, the average cost, is $154. So the cost has continued to go up.
As I recall, at the time that we did that, it wasn't just the cost, it was also that it couldn't be recycled, and it was ending up in the landfill after taking the look and tour of Washington State.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, is that still the case, or, you know, is recycling actually starting to happen again, or?
Yeah. Thank you. It's really easy for me to put one facet on it because it's a simple story to tell, but you're right, that isn't the whole story. It really is. Aspirational recycling doesn't really get recycled. And so, if I remember right here, maybe a different one. So to answer that, there's, you know, capital flows to where it needs to go, and so when China shut the door, there's a very nice opportunity for manufacturers that still need this material. And if the price has gone, people are willing to pay $154 per ton to recycle it, well, if I own a pulp mill, there's an opportunity. Instead of me buying a raw commodity, I can now have someone paying me to take that raw commodity. And so that's what's starting to happen now. The Chinese mills that were in China, guess what? They still need it, but they can't get it inside, so they're moving capital outside of China, buying mills, constructing mills, even in the U.S. But in other countries, to get outside of that regulatory ban, to receive the material, they then clean it up and produce a finished product, a wet lap or a pulp product, which now can get through the borders of China. So yeah, that is happening. It's a slow transformation, but it is happening. And I can't remember the numbers, but there's 15-ish, 19 mill, new mill projects that are announced in North America to do exactly that. And so is that 50% going to come back? Who knows? But it is transforming, and it is in process to be able to do that.
Do you understand this graph? That's the cost of processing, cleaning, sorting? That's not what people are paying for, but that's, the $154 would be the break?
Yeah.
Is that, that's the cost of processing it, but not what the retail price of that would be? Is that correct?
Let me, so, and this really, so in garbage, there's two components, the service component and then the processing component. And if it's garbage, then that's the disposal component. So that price is only the processing, which is inclusive of bailing it, shipping it to in-market, and then paying that end user to then recycle it. And so that component, and I obviously don't know, but I'm gonna say roughly, is probably 40% of the retail price that we would pay at the curb. And so let's just, rough numbers, let's say 60% of that is the service, 40% represents that cost. Thanks. Yeah. Okay, so, before I switch, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, when, you know, ideally, we'd have a recycling program, so the things that are recyclable can be recycled. It's sounding like, at this point, there are some new mills that are starting to take this stuff, and it's been piling up in places, the recycling is piling up unusable. What's, can you, do you have any sense of when it might be that we'd be able to start up a recycling program again, so that we could, if someone wants to pay all those extra fees to get rid of it? Do you have any sense of when we would be able to start a recycling program, where the recycled material placed at the curbside would end up in a recycling program?
Yeah. Tough question. I'll try not to be a politician and give you all the answers to make it seem like I know what the answer is, but I'll start with an example. So let's go real simple. Let's say the recycling program is to recycle aluminum cans. That's a single homogeneous commodity, 100% recyclable with a positive value. So under that scenario, yeah, we can start a program tomorrow. Now, let's add another commodity to it, and under that example, as we add more and more commodities, what's going to happen is those additional commodities are less recyclable, even to the point if we do a full co-mingle program, which is what has traditionally been in place here, a large percentage of those commodities are now no longer recyclable today. And my gut, yes, somewhat my gut feeling, that 50% that's been displaced is never fully going to come back. And likewise, if the market is this negative, 154, if I was a mill, I have little benefit to receive a really low-quality recycled product. And so the tail end of those commodities, just by my instinct, is going to go away. And so the total spectrum of items that are recyclable is now going to shrink, and it's going to shrink to be just the higher-quality ones. And then, let's assume, five years, the market shifts a little bit, and there's more or full demand for those type of commodities. That could happen, and I think that really is, excuse me, what's happening now. And so the short answer of all that is, programs are available today, but they are going to look dramatically different. And this is a passion of mine, is, you know, do what you say and be truthful. And even though there's no deceit, there is disposal going on, because there's nobody buying some of it. And certainly, no matter how much you educate people, they think if they put it in the bin, it's getting recycled, and some of it is not. And that's what bothers me personally as a business, and that's why I talk to the cities about, to make sure everybody knows really what's going on. And so if the criteria is, if you recycle, it must get recycled, that necessitates that the spectrum of commodities gets shrunk. And then we enter a whole new round. People probably don't feel good about that, because the can used to be this full, and now it's only this full. And there really is a transformation to change the metrics of success. The metrics to success, just as I did with the price, used to be just on the tons. Now it's a much more nuanced definition of success. How much of these commodities getting recycled? And so it's a social transformation, it's a policy transformation, it's a market transformation, and it's going to play out over a lot of years. And then it really comes down to what's the goal of the community, and how much do you want to invest, both time and dollar-wise, to do it? And to me, that's how I would summarize really the decision in front of councils, that dress it or help.
Okay. It sounds like the short of it is, we cannot guarantee that to put it in the recycling, even if it's within, like, the items that are approved, that it will be recycled.
Yeah, I call the shrinking menu. That menu needs to shrink to maybe five core commodities. And then with that, we're all creatures that have it, and we want to be aspirational recyclers, and so when no one's looking, we put a couple more things in there. And when you do that across the community, it's very difficult, it's impossible to police. And so when the commodity shows up at the facility, you have to put more manual labor to it to try to get as clean as you can, and the reality is, you're never going to get it clean enough for the standards that China and the market put onto it. And so even though that's the right thing, if everybody listened, it would be sellable, but nobody perfectly listens, because it's a hard left turn to make. And that's literally the transition that's going on now.
We're talking about the five commodities, so aluminum?
Yeah, and that was just a hypothetical, too. Yeah, because forever, everybody would show, well, we've got the...
Probably not plastic, though, the one that February's raised.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ms. Selby?
So I'm actually old enough to remember when we had separate recycling. Is that ever likely to go back? Are the pickup costs too much to make that feasible?
And that's on the spectrum again, and you're absolutely right, that is a higher-quality program. You can do a visual sort at the curb, but, you know, right now, if we pick up a cart and it takes us literally seven or eight seconds to do the cycle, it takes maybe almost a minute to do that. And so the collection cost is much more expensive, and it really comes back to the question of what is the community willing to pay and still receive value from a cleaner product, you know? Now, under that program, where you have control at the curb, and then you have control of the product once it hits the processing facility, the probability that you can get the hypothetical five commodities cleaned to market is very, very high. And so that, I would say, is a worthwhile program, and then that is measured against what's the cost of it. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay, so switching from the recycle question, or topic, onto unlimited recycling. And so this is a quick recap of the contractual change that we did at the beginning of 2018. We implemented an unlimited residential service, that is standard collection 96-gallon cart once a week. And the key to this one is, we don't charge extras, and the analogy that I always use is, if we buy an airline ticket and then we show up with a bag, they charge us $25 more for the bag. Well, that's kind of disappointing. And so the idea, and we've done this since the early 80s in other contract areas, if you, if it's generated by the household, and if you can bag box bundle it to where a person can grab it, the garbage driver can grab it and put it in the container, well, then we're going to pick it up for the same fixed price. And the genesis behind the idea is really clean communities. So by ordinance, if you're on service, just like you're on water service, then you have the opportunity to not have a nuisance buildup in your backyard. So you have the opportunity to dispose of it, and then that tied hand in hand with code enforcement. If there was a code enforcement issue, the city now has the ability to go, you have every ability for no extra cost to get rid of it. So on top of that, it just makes it easy. So that's what it is.
Can you move closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And then on the right-hand side was just a quick infographic on how to use the system. And so by all accounts, it's been received very well. We're having positive comments, people do call in, and really what happens, and you know how this takes time to educate people, when we get a phone call from a resident saying, "Well, I have an extra cap," or "I have an extra bag," what do I do? That's our opportunity to remind them, it's unlimited, and of course, the response is pretty positive. And so I think it's been well-received and hopefully a good benefit to the community. So one of the things we discussed, if you do an unlimited one price fits all, well, over time, there probably is going to be more garbage. That's our experience in prior contracts, and, you know, we said, 12 to 18 months, we'll do a look back, we'll do an accounting, and if there's a change, we'll adjust the rates. And so that really is the purpose of this presentation. We've done a measurement, and what this graph shows, and there's a look back of three one-year periods, and if we look at the customer count, it's pretty static. And then below that, we look at the tonnage count, and it increased. So what does that tell us? Well, that tells us that more garbage went into the collection system as a result of something. And more than likely, that something is the unlimited program and no doubt, the recycle program that had ceased. And so you can see the average set out, 47 pounds, went up to 57 pounds, and then the average from, I guess, 2018, beginning of 2018 to now, is 6.1 pounds per week on average is what has been increased. The best we can guess is about 40% of that increase came from the recycle program. Okay, on to the rates. And so there's several slices of the service component, and the way to do this, when I go through this, look at it as three columns. And so the first column is the disposal component. And so we'll focus in on the disposal rate. So the 963 is the collection rate, and then second, disposal cost per cart per month due to tonnage change. So that's that six pounds per set out translated into the cost per residential household. And so at today's cost, the price went up 52 cents as a result of the increased usage of disposal, not in the service component, the extra six pounds. And so that went up 52 cents. That's the first iteration. The second iteration is, the City of Wall Wall operates the Sudbury landfill, and by ordinance, they increase their rates. And so beginning on January 1st, they're going to increase the rate from $91 to essentially $94. And so after making the tonnage adjustment, the 52 cents, then we apply the price adjustment that's going to happen on January 1st to that, which increases another 24 cents. We add those up together, and we come up with a new pro forma disposal component of Then we go to the collection component, which excludes the disposal part, and that one's a little bit simpler. The collection component, the part that Basin Disposable retains out of the total monthly bill, is $11.45, and then by action of contract, it is adjusted by CPI factor. And so that $11.45 is adjusted by 2.8, 2.08%, the 23 cents. We add those together, the new collection component that we retain is $11.69. With that, we go to the third column, which is literally column one, let's call it two, the new pro forma rate is $22.08 as a result of two things, the tonnage increase and the price increases. So that's the math behind that. And I would like to ask if there's any questions on that, to make sure everybody's understanding.
So 52 cents is 5% of the 963. So if you go back to the other slide, I'm sorry, just so I understand this, the 52 cents is accommodating for the rise in the overall increase of all tonnage between the additional amount from the residential and from commercial?
Just residential.
Just residential, that's being kept, okay.
Yeah. So we call that cost of service, and we break it into three layers, residential, commercial, then industrial, which is Dropbox, which there's not much activity. And so that literally only spreads it across the residential, because the new unlimited program only applies to the residential.
So from the $3,817 to the $4,300, approximately, that's about a 5%, I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
Corally is very close to the 5% rate increase on the next page.
Yeah, okay, exactly. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So to reiterate, the new rates would be effective on January 1st, and that coincides with the increased tip fee and the adjustment date in the contract. Overall weighted average cost, and I believe this is contract-wide, city-wide for all services, it averages out to 2.2%. Certainly a 4%ish in the residential, but when you average it out, it's 2.2. And then again, reiterating, the service component, the $11.45 that we saw before is 2.1%, and then the disposal is 2.4 on the pricing. Right? Not the volume, just the pricing. And so, and it's illustrated there, the 91 to the 94 is the 2.4% increase. So what does that mean to the customers? The reference service that we always do is the 96-gallon cart, that's the standard service level. It goes up there to 5% and to 4.8% at that level for a total of $25.08 tax included. The commercial sector, which does not get a volume change, it only gets the CPI change, is pretty darn close to the CPI change, and there's a reference right there of a four-yard commercial container. And then the disposal component, there is no service in that, that merely is the pass-through for the disposal, that mimics exactly the rate change at the landfill. And so that shows the final impact. With that, we will continue to monitor recycling. If there's ever any questions, give us a phone call, I'll be here and help address that complex issue however I can. CPI adjustments, as we just went through. And then, so, and here's another topic here. So certainly, within the first 18 months, we've realized a behavioral change, there's more tons that go through the system. Over many years, what's interesting is people use the unlimited provisions more and more, but it is a slow increase, as we've seen here, I think this is relatively slow increase on the increase. Truly, if we didn't do the recycle program change, maybe the volume only would have went up 3%, right? You know? So with that, 10 years from now, I can tell you, it's going to go up a little bit more. So what we'll do is probably another 18 months, take another snapshot, and if it's significant, you know, we'll address it. So what we'll do is probably another 18 months, take another snapshot, and if it's significant, you know, we'll address it. If not, a lot of times, that's addressed just by unit growth. So the point is, it's, I believe from past history, it'll slowly go up, and it'll finally hit a point, whether it's in year five, whether it's in year seven, I don't know, but it'll settle out. But it is a slow change, as we've evidenced by this. So with that, I will stop rambling. And if there's any questions, please, let me know.
Ms. Selby?
Excuse me, I have two questions, actually. The first is, if we went back to multiple size cans, what kind of impact would that have on the cost?
Yeah, so I'll dovetail into the prior comment, and I'll talk about variable pricing and fixed pricing. So to answer you directly, is what that, that program is largely the antithesis of an unlimited collection program. And so the idea behind an unlimited collection program is to collect the solid waste as efficiently as possible. And so let's assume that the average household sets out 64 or 70 gallons. But since it's unlimited, the act of putting extra garbage next to the can is expensive because now the truck is no longer automated, you have to stop, you put manpower to it. And so that has an additional marginal cost to it. And so the idea is standardize the capacity, standardize the 96 gallon cart across the whole community. And that increases the probability that all extras will end up inside of the cart, which then makes the service as efficient as possible. And so, yeah, we're here to provide service, we can do anything that the community wants. The question is, what does the community want? And it is not congruent to have an unlimited program with a three tier of sizes because people will migrate to the price, and they will go to the lowest price, yet they will still utilize an unlimited provision, which puts the garbage outside of the cart, which defeats the automation of the collection system. And so that is that. Now, and I'll make another broad comment, this is my opinion, but I think it's well-founded. I have a lot of years dealing with regulatory agencies, the Washington Utilities Commission, and I certainly have the opportunity to sit on a PUD rate advisory board. And the debate comes up, and the debate has been the debate for many, many years about variable pricing versus fixed pricing. And so if we remember some of those numbers, the disposal component is roughly 30 to 40% of the total service cost. And so if, let's pick 30%, if 30% is the variable cost, and that variable cost changes by selection of cart by six pounds, let's say it changes it by 4%. 4% times 30% isn't much of a change in relation to the whole thing. So variable pricing only affects a slice of the total price. This is where electrical utilities get in trouble because if they shift more towards incentivizing people to use less electricity, the revenue stability that comes in to pay for PPNE, property plant equipment of millions of dollars, is now highly variable, which puts the entity at risk. Which, calling it economic theory, the more risk you are, the more rate return you need to compensate for the risk. And so in the long run, the price goes up. In the short run, or the best way to do it, in my opinion, is recognizing that 60-plus percent of the cost is fixed, and you want to fix that as best you can to stabilize the revenue coming in. And if you have stable revenue, it's safer, therefore, you can offer a lower margin. And so that's kind of a broad perspective, but that's my commentary on that.
My second question, I'm actually not sure if it's for you or for Mike. Do we have any anecdotal or any kind of information about how the unlimited collection, you do see a dumping that we've seen around?
As far as like code enforcement issues or?
Yeah, or just seeing how people dumping washing machines off the side of the road. I mean, probably in the county.
Well, I, well, I mean, Trey's another event, but he could definitely speak to it next week. I do know he actively talking with them, the amount of rubbish issues in general, code enforcement issues, of people not getting really trashy because at the time, it wasn't the unlimited collection, it was all itemized. They had to manually hold the amount of complaints and incidences. He could speak to them directly when he sees them next week. And I can just provide. Thank you.
Sorry, I have a number of questions. If I was understanding you correctly, when you were discussing, hey, as you, as you throw program versus a fixed rate?
Yeah.
It's sounding as though you're saying to the average customer, is it's, it's a little bit less expensive to have a fixed rate?
In the long run.
In the long run, it's less expensive to the average customer?
Yeah, and it comes from certainty, right? So if there's a certain amount of capital equipment, and let's say every year, you have to invest a million dollars in order to keep that capital equipment alive and functioning. If you have certainty that that revenue is going to cover that necessary reinvestment, then you can offer a lower rate. Now, if you have variability, in one year, you don't have enough revenue coming in to cover what you will have to buy no matter what, in order to compensate for that variation, then you have to increase your margin. And that's regulatory theory, that's, you know, how it happens. And again, it's hard to conceptualize because it is a long run.
I got you. So one thing I've noticed about the unlimited collections, I see a lot of people with yard waste bundled up, see it bagged, I bag a lot of mine and put it out, sorry, by the way, you guys can talk to me, but too heavy. Do we, do you, I forget my appearance here, do we have like a green waste collection thing? Like, is there a green waste bin that people can get to curd some of the?
Not within the city, so that's not a provision within the contract. Now, other communities, and we do it in a very small handful of cities or residents in the county for other regulatory reasons, but that would be a whole separate program. Same thing with recycling, you know, to the degree that it's collected separately, you would have to go to a separate receiver facility to truly compost it, if that was the intent, which I perceive is what it is. It would be nice to do it, it comes down to volume. Is there enough volume to support the fixed cost to build that type of facility? And I will just say that the city of Wall Wall operates a compost facility, and I know they have, they have had issues trying to get the finished product out the door and actually used. And so that is another component of the program.
My final question here, last one. Are there, I guess, low-income programs to help people who are struggling with their, with their, with their utility bills and whatnot? If so, could you just very, very briefly mention those?
Yeah, so, and staff could help me if I misspeak on this. I believe there is a city ordinance that defines, it's either senior low-income or it defines low-income. And I believe this contract also, it's always my goal to mimic the contract provisions as best we can to city policy. That way residents have, you know, one standard to adhere to, even if they pay a different vendor, right? And so I believe those provisions are in place here. And for those who do have an economic need, there is a process to petition, to certify that that need is there. And then once that's certified, then there is prescribed on the contract, a lower rate for low-income.
Yeah.
Yeah, you betcha.
You have any other questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Derek.
Are we next on the agenda, Mr. Dorn, just going to speak about the New York City Valley Code? Welcome, Janet.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Members of the city council, once again, for the record, my name is Greg Dorn, and I've been working with your staff and the planning commission in updating the city's development regulations in accordance with the provisions of your updated comprehensive plan. I wanted to, just to reiterate a couple of things we talked about in our last session. Since we last met, we've had an opportunity to incorporate further revisions from city staff, the city attorney, from the public works department, from the city administrator, from the planning department, all intended to help clarify the content and streamline the provisions. We've continued to make the editorial changes we discussed at the last meeting. One thing that we did that you may have noticed in reviewing the draft, we had a, had included a model ordinance provided by the Association of Washington Cities to address wireless communication facilities. But given the recent changes in technology, the model code is already out of date. And so instead of proceeding with an out-of-date model code, we reinserted your existing code, which we know is out of date, but we know the code, we know its strengths and we know its weaknesses. And we're going to now proceed with an update of the code to incorporate the new technologies such as 5G and the small and microcell facilities. The city of Spokane Valley has kind of led the wave, this in 2019, with coming up with regulations that are relatively straightforward, relatively easy to understand, and relatively easy to administer. And so we're going to take the existing code, add to it some of the key provisions from Spokane Valley. But we'll take that back through the planning commission because anytime we're talking about things that can affect our ability to communicate as well as to affect the built environment and character of the community, we'll want to make sure that the planning commission has had a chance to review and comment on it. There'll be a public hearing on it before it comes back to you. But that'll be at a later date, and until that time, we'll continue to operate with what we have, the known entity and the known shortcomings of it. So I wanted to alert you to that provision. Otherwise, you may have noticed in communication that was provided to you that we've made all the editorial changes that we've discussed. We put out a last call to staff, and we said, last call, last call, any more changes? And if you can, kind of give us an A-list, a B-list, and a C-list, so we make sure the important things get done. We know that based on a major rewrite of the regulations, as extensive as this is, there is going to be a follow-up ordinance at some point in time that'll have a lot of housekeeping measures. Things that seem so clear to us right now, but when we start to revise application forms or prepare handouts for the public, or a few people go through the system, we're going to say, what were we thinking? We know we're going to miss a few things, but we're pretty darn confident. You had asked last time, how do we feel about it? We feel pretty darn good about it. But we just know from experience, there's going to be some tinkering that needs to be done along the way. So you'll have some follow-up measures in that regard. But otherwise, we wanted to answer any questions you have tonight. And based on your questions and comments at your meeting on November 12th, there would be two ordinances for your consideration. The first would be to repeal the existing regulations, the existing four chapters, and then adopt one new unified code with all of the provisions in one chapter. And then there would be a second ordinance, which would amend the provisions that are applicable to a hearings examiner to make sure that those provisions are consistent with everything else. And then we would proceed, as we discussed, with making modifications to the applications, the handouts, so that on April, on January 1st, we can then proceed with implementing the new regulations. And that will be a very, very significant milestone for the city. Very few cities undertake something this ambitious. But I think you and the community, you will be very, very pleased with the results to have a whole body of work that represents current standards, current thinking, and recent technological innovations, and a streamlined, much more user-friendly set of regulations. But tonight, it's your opportunity for any final questions or comments or direction you may have. And then we'll be back on November 12th of the ordinances. Any questions or comments?
Do you have any questions? I have one smaller then. Are any of the tweaks or fixes or anything that we might need or maybe look at later, are there anything that you think might require legal consultation or anything?
All of the changes that we have proposed to date have been reviewed by the city attorney, and her comments have been excellent in that regard. Any future tweaks or revisions will, of course, go through the city attorney for review because it is a legally binding and applicable set of regulations. We'll want to make sure that not only are they internally consistent, but they comply with state and federal law and also the benefit of the experience that the city attorney has in applying regulations of this type.
Thank you. Mr. Cleveland?
Would we happen to have a, you know, plain English, simple person kind of description of the changes that folks could read about?
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea to have kind of a, kind of a handout or something. We've also talked about doing some things like having some workshops for builders, developers, realtors, property owners, and walk through the changes. But yes, a kind of a simple summary sheet that says, that could be available online or here in city hall that says, want you to be aware of some of the changes that have been made. We're also going to have a number of handouts the city already has. You may notice, when you come in, there's always some handouts there, but we're going to add some more handouts to this. So we'll try to, in a number of different ways, to make it as user-friendly as possible.
And I would add that through the course of the public comment period, we did have some kind of highlight pamphlets that identified like accessory flooring units, vacation rental changes, setback, setback changes, zoning changes, things like that. So we have had that stuff, and I think we've included some of those in the comments.
Yeah, the comments, yeah. Other questions?
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Dorn.
Excellent, thank you very much. So we'll have two ordinances for you at your next meeting. And then that will give us the direction we need to proceed with an eye toward a January 1st implementation date. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearings, so we're going to move on to action items. First item up is Mr. Rizetow to discuss the contribution to the Wall Wall Valley Gold Star Family Monument Project.
Thank you, Mayor. So this was panel council direction last week. We received presentation from the Gold Star Committee, and this just solidifies essentially the $10,000 contribution toward the engineering and construction of the said monument over in Fort Wall Wall Park adjacent to the city. And this was a budgeted for item within the fiscal year 2019 budget, so.
Do we have any questions? Do we have some motion?
I'd like to approve President number 19-037, which authorizes the city administrator to sign a memorandum of standing with the Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation regarding a contribution of $10,000 towards the Gold Star Families Monument.
One second.
For the second, in favor? I oppose.
I would love to say thank you to us at Gold Star, and I'd like to say thank you very much.
And that note appearing now, the motion is approved and has been passed. Thank you. Next is our, Mr. Rizetow speaking about the 2020 state and federal legislative agenda.
Okay, thank you. Went over this at the past workshop earlier this month and then the previous council meeting, but this is just passage of the both state and federal legislative agenda. And that's essentially how we communicate our goals and various key projects that we need outside fiscal assistance with to legislators, governor, and state agencies. So for the state agenda, the key thing there from a policy perspective is additional money, just the actual remainder on the two drinking water wells we're working in. Also, the Building Business Ecosystem Act, which would allow a sales tax increment financing. That's needed for economic development tools because right now in this state, we essentially have none, which makes economic development a challenge here, especially being a border community. And then the remainder of them really are carryover from last year because State of Washington operates on a bionium system, so you're heavy lifting. To be frank, is in the odd number of years, the uneven number of years, they'll deal with some policy issues, but by and large, the big heavy lifting for finances is done in those odd number of years. So there isn't really much of a change. From a project standpoint, the key ones is, as far as what we're expecting for next year, heavily advocate to get legislative appropriations to reconstruct Seether from ASC Street. ASC Street and Damson from Rose to Cargill. Last year, they actually didn't pass the House and it stalled in the Senate. We believe it has traction to actually go this go around, so that's probably our most urgent priority because we tried for it before. The remainder of them is really just starting to educate on the projects to the legislators. So the wastewater treatment plant to do the various phases over the next couple of years, which is ordered by State Department of Ecology, it's a chunk of change, it's $20 million. And frankly, to pay for that, it's a grouping of Department of Ecology appropriations, you name it, to come up with that. So it's really educating on that. Same with South College Place, the trunk line in the park, that's going to be a great project. It comes at a cost, and there are economic, there are some economic programs that the state has just for infrastructure, so it's getting it on their radar. And then Lions Park, the state has a recreation conservation office program. It's keeping that on the radar for community park project, that's the top one, including dealing with the pond and separating it from the creek, so that way it is a healthy fishing pond in stormwater site for years to come. The federal legislative agenda isn't really much different. Only changes there really is defending the community development block grant program, which every year seems to be a threat of going away. Also helping with wildfire funding, US 12 Phase 8 is a key one, and then simplifying the process for USDA rural development grants, because we've tried that in the past and it's been a literal nightmare to deal with. And then also recycling, figuring out the solution to the issues that you just heard about the fact that getting other areas to take what used to go China is a bit of a challenge, and it's really a macro issue. So beyond the past workshop and council, I haven't really heard any other input as far as any changes needed, and the sooner we pass this the better, especially since we're advocating for direct legislative appropriation. So that's why it's before you tonight.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Rosatello? Do we have a motion?
We're so chatty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing done, the motion has been approved.
Do I need to specific the safe resolution? I'd like to amend my motion to approve resolution 19-037, which adopts the legislative agenda.
038.
I could do an M F.
I'm going to have the agenda going.
19-038.
Okay, 19-038. Is my second?
So.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Byron.
Byron.
Do we need to re-vote?
I would think so. Yep, so.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, okay, now hearing done. The vice motion has been approved. Moving on, Mr. Rosatello again regarding the acceptance of one of the acre property subdivision.
Okay, so I'll give you a little bit of history here. This park project was talked at length in our park master plan that was part of the overarching comprehensive plan process last year. As such, as far as where the name came from, in research for the park master plan, it was identified that the little lot behind the police department and fire department was deemed Veterans Park, and through the community process of the park's master plan, it was basically determined that should the park out of the Hayden Homestead development reach critical mass where there were enough improvements, and it was done in the satisfaction of city staff and development folks, that in essence, the name would move over to that park site. It has a council for final approval, though that was just in the park master plan. It's gone to the point where now there's playground equipment out there, there's turf, it looks park-like, and there's actually a ribbon coven this Friday. So that is what is behind that. So Park Arbor and Recreation Advisory Commission, they recommended that the name be moved over there since the activities around that park are a park. A lot of folks don't realize that the park back there is a park, and that park is a park, so.
Got it.
All right, do we have any questions on that?
The park is a park.
Mr. Peter?
I'll leave you, I was in motion.
Oh, I have a question. Who put together this flyer? I noticed there's an extreme lack of diversity in the flyer.
They, Hayden Homestead, so.
You might want to like push that in the future.
Yeah. Well, we were busy trying to push it, the park would be park-like, so.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, that'd be nice to convey that message.
Who decided that this next park would be named Veterans Park?
It came up during the park comprehensive plan process, and the Park Arbor and Recreation Board, they thought it was a good idea. Then when the park comprehensive plan itself went through this body, I didn't hear any comments to the contrary, so I just took it for granted that once it was improved to the point where it was a community park, that that seemed to be a good thing, so therefore that's why the resolution is before you because now there is enough equipment, turf, and so forth where it is a park.
All right, any other questions?
Did you want to make the motion, March?
No, I just don't, I think we should call it Veterans Park. We didn't vote on it as a council.
You can bring it up to the board and march. I will motion to approve resolution number 19-039, authorizing acceptance of 1.67 acre property for community parkland and naming it Veterans Park.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have two no's. Mr. Robert. Now I don't want to say that, I always say hearing done. With the majority voting in favor, the motion has been approved. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Ricard, let us speak about the contract amendment.
So this is contract number two with Mr. Dorn, who was just here. The contract from 2018 was in the amount of $47,300, and that was primarily to handle the uniform development code update that we worked on this year, and also work through the urban growth applications that we had in with the county and finalize that. That part of the process entailed to be a lot more work than Mr. Dorn had anticipated in his original contract to the tune of just over $20,000 worth of additional work. And then in addition to that, we have another $3,000 in his assistance in preparation of the appeal that we filed with the growth management hearing board. So this would be a retroactive contract to pay Mr. Dorn for his work done in the year 2019 in the tune of $66,872.50. And in addition to that, the contract will cover additional work that we anticipate doing in 2020, which would include additional work on the countywide planning policies that we hope that the county will bring up for revisions, fine tuning of the development code. We have some conference of plan work to do in anticipation of, since we have the Martin Airfield in our urban growth area, we don't have that addressed in our conference of plan because we were not anticipating that it would be in our new GA. So we have some additional work to do in 2020, and so the remaining balance of this contract amendment would be for the 2020 work and a little bit of finish-up work here in 2019. So I apologize, no, probably nobody's going to want to make this.
I know, it's going to say.
Motion, because it's, and also, I would also like to make a correction in that motion. It should be the mayor that will sign the contract as well, not the city administrator. So, any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Pearson?
No, I was, no.
And the other, any questions?
I just thought Greg was doing this out of the kindness of his heart, we have to pay him. He seems like he's having so much fun.
I know, he hasn't billed us once this year.
Yeah.
So I'm a little confused by the budget, because it says there's 107, 500 budgeted, and then it says we're going to go up to 125,000. So are we going over our budget?
That's, the 107 is what we budgeted in 2019 for, within that line item, that bar's account. There were, we were hoping that we would also tackle the countywide planning policies this year, and there's also the exclusive ag zones that surround us, we need to study those things. And so those were items that we had budgeted for, but we didn't have a contract with Mr. Dorn for, so. So we have enough money in our budget this year to pay him for the work that he has done. Does that make sense?
Yes. What about work going forwards? I mean, you just talked about additional work that you.
So the work going forward is included in the 2020 budget proposals, so that's covered.
Do we have any other questions?
I'll motion if no one else would rather. And it's, I'm changing city administrator to city mayor, is that right?
Yes.
All right. I will motion to authorize the city mayor to enter into contract amendment number two with G R Dorn and Associates for professional planning services outlined in the scope of work revised October 16, 2019, amendment number two, to include implementing the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations, county comprehensive plan amendments, county comprehensive plan appeal, UDC implementation support, city comprehensive plan amendments revised countywide, planning policies, and other items identified in the scope of services not to exceed $125,000 without further authorization by council.
That was one long sentence.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing done, the motion has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Rosatello, I hope we're going to get you comfortable there.
Well, I've gone over all these several times, I just wanted on your radar, so. Oh, Murray's, okay. Okay.
He's going somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, he's already going capital facility plan, so. Murray's Rustic Pie, so that is a farmer's market vendor, and there's been some outreach to the city about operating out in the parking lot on first and third Tuesdays and then Thursdays. And basically, they would remit 30 bucks per day, and then re-looked at the contract, added the appropriate language to indemnify the city and so forth, and add all the appropriate language. It's basically for a term to go from November through May as a trial period. Seems like an interesting thing, it tests essentially micro-business, and I know a common discussion point in Economic Development Commission is additional outlets for food and so forth. So it seems like an interesting thing to try, and it's a known quantity, so see how it goes. If this does become popular over time, I mean, some ideas such as where I used to work at in both Colfax and Beaver, then is they actually establish a lottery system to essentially pick who would be on the side if this actually does become a popular thing. So that's something to be considered in the future, but it's a limited-term duration, so.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Cleveland?
Are there any other sites besides the city parking lot that they'd be interested in, or are they just planning to be there and be there?
I directed them to a variety of other sites first, and they felt that this worked best for them, so.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Why do, when are the dates?
That's when they're available, so. Because they're negotiating similar agreements right now with City of Walla Walla, and then also City of Richland, so those are the dates that they're in the neighborhood.
Ms. Salvi?
I'd like to move to approve resolution number 19-040, which authorizes the mayor to sign a agreement with Murray's Rustic Pie.
Second.
And I'd point out that it's within walking distance of my home and my work, so.
And did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, great. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing done, the motion to that pizza in the parking lot has been passed.
I have a question, but, I mean, I'm not going to change my vote, but will we get some sort of information from them on their success of it? I mean, of them being able to look out and see?
I've asked for them, that's in there, so yes, so we'll be able to see if it is a good guess after that.
Awesome.
Will you have administrative reports, Mr. Ansley, here up where we do stormwater management program?
Got it.
Is that what I'm doing?
We're glad to have you back. Robert, is it okay in your absence?
Oh, yeah, he's probably a little lonely up here, it's not all that stuff. So this is regarding the stormwater management program. We had a consultant, Parametrics, who created the whole document, and I don't know if you looked at it, but it's like 1,000 pages plus, it's about 300 actually, but it's pretty lengthy. And we also attached the permit that were subject to the municipal stormwater permit. So this program essentially lays out what we need to do for compliance to meet these permit requirements as far as, it actually breaks it down pretty well, I'll just go through the list.
I'm sorry, you said to meet what requirement?
To meet the permit requirements from ecology.
Department of Ecology, okay.
So it pretty much breaks down our existing stormwater system, our existing deficiencies, and then it kind of walks through a plan of how to address public education outreach, public involvement, illicit discharge, detection elimination, which is basically tracking pollutants and what people dump down storm drains and tracking it if we need to, to find out and do that like a business. It addresses construction, site stormwater control, post-construction stormwater management, this is for redevelopment, redevelopment, so stuff that's already existing, it's kind of grandfathered in, and we address it when they try to change stuff. Addresses operations and maintenance for the entire city operations. There requires us to do mapping, monitoring of outfalls to service waters, requires a capital improvement plan, development of regional stormwater facilities. It pretty much addresses every aspect of stormwater that we need to look at as a city, and kind of gives us the baseline and steps forward to accomplish this. We review the document internally, the paramedics sent it, and we sent it to Department of Ecology, because they had comments on it too, so we're going to see if their comments have been addressed on their end, if they're satisfied. And if Ecology is satisfied on their end, and they make the remaining changes that we are looking for from the engineering department, then we're going to go ahead and look to adopts. But yeah, take a look at it, it's pretty lengthy, a lot in there, so, any questions?
Ms. Salvi?
I did not look for this in there because I was daunted by the length, but did we talk about our habit of putting all the leaves out in the street and then having a large chunk of them go down into our catch basins and clog them, which is not an official part of the program, but.
It's part of it. Yeah, no, that's, it specifically lays out we can inspect this number of catch basins per year, and if they have this much level of sedimentary debris leaves, you got to clean them. So yeah, it addresses that, and the street, New Street Seaker will help with that as well.
But we're still going to have people do that and sweep it up and back to. But we're still going to have people do that and sweep it up and factor it out?
Yes, we have to, yeah, we're a part of do that.
Well, I mean, it seems like there might be a better way to get rid of the leaves rather than putting them in the street and then sweeping them up and then giving them out.
What's your recommendation?
Seems like an expensive one. I think what might.
Cut the trees down?
Well, no, I pay for Nebraska, the whole trees thing is new to me, but no, it seems like we could have a collection. It seems like it would be cheaper to pick them up when they're dry than to sweep them up and factor them like when they're wet.
So you'd plan when to pick them up based on weather forecasts or?
No, it would be like a, what's the word? A giant garbage can, it's an extra one.
So like a yard waste can?
Yeah, and then you put all your leaves in there.
Like Michael does, over 65 pounds apparently. But are you talking about people just gathering their yard waste into bags instead of sweeping them to the street like I'm pretty sure we should?
No, I don't think they should put their bags, I think they should put it in the yard waste container so it can go out and get composted. That's a very.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I would encourage residents to, you know, rake their lawns and bag it up and dispose of it. And we also touched on BDI's green waste disposal, so yeah.
Yeah, the, the bagging.
Yeah, the, the leaves aren't good because they break down and add nutrients to the water, which jumps into the creek eventually, which algae blooms and whatnot, so yeah, it is a problem, and we'll be looking at too.
It's the first place I've ever lived where you did that. Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's pretty common in the Northwest, yeah, well, I, it depends on what you have in your yard. I mean, some of us have trees that would fill up literally 15, 20 of those containers. I mean, it would be, yeah. Quite an exercise.
Just call them.
I would think that if we saw someone on the street with big bags dumping them on the street, that that might be moderation. If we think of our own, we can't get in any, I guess.
It's pretty windy around here sometimes, so it's kind of a.
I know, it's a thing people try to do a lot, but if you literally saw someone on the street, how does that work?
People tend to rake them to the street.
That's what they're, that's what we're told to do.
Oh, really?
So maybe develop an ordinance to address where you put your leaves, you know, it might be something developed.
They think of like the snow, people shovel it into the road, and we need to keep that on our.
Mr. Bobbitt?
It's very complicated.
I know personally, I know ours ends up in the street, we end up in a forecast, we either chip or just rake them in the forecast, they kind of litterize them by spreading their lawn.
So long into that compost in the yard?
So, you know, I don't know. It's always people put a treat.
Do we now, does Jason pick up the yard waste?
No.
Unless you put it in a container.
Correct, I know, but if you put it in a container, then they pick it up.
We have a sweep.
We have a little bit of collection, so then bags, garbage can, yeah, but would they come up to compost, that isn't my question.
I think he addressed that during his presentation, yeah.
All right, do we have any other questions for, for Mr. Ansley?
We'll be back, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Take your time, read it.
Yeah, we'll be back after the papers. Mr. Vitale, you're back up. Study with the Dr. 2020, 2025 Capital Facilities Plan.
I'll briefly go over, because I went over it several times, so won't occupy more time here, just please take a look at it, it has the six-year projection for respective projects. Some changes to that is an analysis with the C Street project and how much that cost. There was an adjustment to what we think Seether and Dampson will be, and that was covered in the legislative agenda, and we're requesting that from the legislature, so there'll be direct cost recovery from that. And then the project of eventually dealing with State Route 125 and College Avenue, we end up getting final numbers from South College Place Study, it was covered by the Community Economic Revitalization Board grant, and that showed that that would probably cost about another 500,000, and that's about three years out, and that'd be a state project when they get to that intersection. And then we included placeholder for a collector wrote through the Mike McCurn and Craig Christiansen development mainly because of that building business ecosystem bill passes that I mentioned about in the legislative agenda, there's an opportunity for cost recovery through that mechanism that that program would create. So just try and make sure everything is in order, so that way if the various bills pass, we have everything right there. So take a look at it and let me know over time if you have questions, so.
Do we have any questions right now? All right, and we'll move on to the equipment replacement plan.
Okay, equipment replacement plan, it just has everything we need to replace from an equipment vehicle perspective across the city organization in the next six years. One note of a change that we received yesterday is Jacobs responded to us yesterday. Out of the wastewater treatment plan for an all-inclusive, the cost differential will be about 191,000, but that would include essentially dealing with the vector, the skid steer, everything out there from a mechanical vehicle perspective, so that is a good deal. We're going to get it itemized, so you'll see the breakout leaves here, but I want to make sure that number was in front of you as soon as I received it, because I got it last night. So that was put in there, so just be aware of that, but everything else remains static from the previous times I presented the equipment replacement plan.
That was my question actually, was what are the differences that we're seeing in any of these? Because it didn't seem like anything was really highlighted, or are these things that you have already gone through and like trimmed down some requests, or what are we really?
Oh, that, well, I'm just making sure it's on your radar, this is stuff I previously went over. The stuff with the capital facility plan, I outlined the four things that changed, and that was within the agenda pack and with equipment replacement, the only thing that changed is the fact that Jacobs finally gave us a price, so.
Thanks.
I'm pleased to see the water tender on there.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have any questions or comments right now, Mr. Vitale?
So you said you've got the Jacobs, it's not on the summary, I think, or is it looking for?
Thought it was.
It's on the, it's the last.
Oh, okay, I see, I find it, thank you.
Are there any questions still?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Vitale, we'll move on to the information technology plan.
Okay, information technology plan, that was Stasco from previous times I presented there. Basically trying to automate our human resource function, so that way we can accept the applications online and then payroll and the quack and quack out. Also make sure that our computer replacement plan of the seven-year timeframe that that carries throughout, and essentially continue paying the maintenance costs for respective programs we use for finance and GIS engineering and so forth, so that's what comprises that.
Any questions on the IT technology plan? All right, thank you.
No, I was only going to say Marge usually asks this, but if we're done.
Go ahead.
We're close to done with our meeting, but if any of the students have questions, I was going to invite that, but when we get.
Sure, okay, well, next, we just have some informational inquiries for you off the grid. Mr. Sherman, would you like to start the presentation?
Is that all right?
Yes.
All right. Do any of you, with our enthralling meeting tonight, especially about trash, do any of you have any questions for us?
I have a question. So, I mean, in terms of the trash thing, it seems like you guys are dealing with something that maybe if it comes up, you know, that was a big thing with the new one, the CDI company, so it's like, you guys deal with a lot of those types of things towards the end of the year, and you guys' sessions here, is that more common than, I guess, per se, like, you know, February, you know, March?
I mean, it's really one of the contracts, but you have totally towards the end of the year, you're setting rates on everything.
Yeah, yeah, so garbage, totally raised, and we did that one for the end of the year on our contract for youth recreation program, fire and micro business, but then there's other contracts like with auditor's office and other things that come out of the year eleven, so really varies, but the majority of it is in November, December, and January.
So are you guys typically more busy, I guess, now, or is it just because it's central out with different things?
It's, it's busy all the time, though, with different things, so the last half of the year is really a heavy lift, and with contracts, the budget and so forth, that means we get into summer, it's getting all contracts for construction, because the way you get to construction by the summer, you have to have the contracts out by April and May, so they can get all of the sand for the roads and the watering, so now it's more budget type stuff than when you did in the spring, it's more about contract versus construction.
So I know, I noticed like.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, now I'm thinking of the resident.
My name, oh, my name is Josiah B. Meister, I live in, well, I live in Wallawalla, so. I was just wondering, I noticed how like two people said no to one thing, and so I heard you said majority still rules, so it passed, but what if like five people say no and five people say yes? Or what is the majority, so like six and four is majority still?
There's seven members.
Oh, there's not 10?
No.
Oh, there's only seven, so there won't be even, oh, sorry, my bad.
No, it's a good question. Well, yeah, so if we're not all present, then obviously it's the majority of that, so we've had a couple meetings that we've had to cancel where there were only three of us, so there weren't enough to make a decision, you have to have at least four to vote.
And if there's a tie, the mayor breaks the tie.
It's a good question.
Good question.
With certain, with certain items, there has to be a form, there has to be one, right?
All right, I believe we have another hand raised? Yes? Not letting you get out of it.
All right. My name is Jake Friedel, I live in College Place.
Yay!
Yeah.
I know your mom.
So BDI was here, did you summon them, or do they just come because they want to? What determines like when companies like that, you know, when they come in to talk or?
You give the Sunday ritual.
You know, I'd say that with, with that company, over the years, there have been some pretty intense discussions, and so they're pretty regular now in coming up and wanting to do a presentation and inform the council about what's going on with global matters with Chinese recycling and things like this. I mean, it pained us tremendously to stop recycling, that was a tough decision, but on the other hand, you can't, you cannot basically tell a falsehood that when you put it in this magical container, it still just goes to the landfill eventually, and so I would say that they are, my new meeting, I comment on this also, they are really sensitive to informing the council and coming and showing and doing a presentation now almost every year because of these flashpoints and some of the tough decisions we've got to make as a council.
Yeah, they're very sensitive to community needs, so they at least show up once a year, and if there's really a hot button topic, they'll show up once a quarter, I know when we moved from the various camps sizes on limited collection, they were regular for a while there.
And I'll add on our, they have come to our workshops, I believe, or regardless of when he's here, this was probably one of our shortest conversations with him, because you'd be surprised at the number of questions that we all have about trash, but that is something that everybody cares about, yeah, and we switched to the unlimited pickup, there was a lot of discussion, and so even a lot of the other topics that you see here where we're flying through, we've seen everything several times before it gets here, so that makes some stuff shorter, but garbage is actually always a hot topic.
Well, and just to add to that, I would say that it's kind of a combination between like the, in the garbage, they're required to give us a report once quarter or annual, once a year.
Okay.
And, but they've been doing quarterly lately because of the changes, and so when that time comes up, they'll usually contact and say, hey, we'd like to do a presentation, or send it in the mail. Other things like the Gold Star Memorial that we voted on, you know, the people that want that, contact Mike and say, hey, we'd like to get on the agenda, there's a negotiation that happens, or if there's something that we have a question about, Mike or some of the other staff can go out and try and find somebody that can talk to us about it. So it's, it comes from both directions.
Yeah. Thank you.
One more.
Also, kind of in general, when it comes to the agenda, it's often made weeks in advance. People from all the different departments might talk to Mike and say, hey, we need to talk about this, this is a project coming up, and people related to different issues that we might be having, will get told, hey, we need you to be here on the state or the local at a time in the coming, but to me, Mike, you can describe some of the backend of like how things get on the agenda.
Yeah. I mean, so what we end up having is we have weekly staff meeting when we go over issues on Friday and what needs to go on future agenda, also we have this document where it essentially outlines what's going to be on future council meetings, occasionally stuff gets moved in or dependent on consultants be either or other situations, but we end up forecasting for about two-month time period what'll end up coming down the pipeline. And then also a lot of ways things get determined too is through discussion at the workshops, a lot, a lot of in-depth discussion happens with those, those are held the first Tuesday in the month of 5:30, so typically we really go into weeds on certain topics, and then by the time ends up getting introduced again to the full council meeting, either on Saturday or fourth Tuesday, and then finally for action. It's gone through several times, like that capital facility replacement plan, ID plan, why I breeze through that is because that was about the fourth time I mentioned, so that way by the time it gets to the final action, it's pretty much as a known quantity of what's in the ID, so.
You guys can come to our workshops too, if you'd like to get all the due.
That's a very quick session, as a new council, that's one of the things, you've got all this volume of stuff, you know, like these plans he went over today, could be 50 or 100 PowerPoints, the unified development plan seems like it's 6,000 pages, and at least you get to see it over and over, so that you, by the time we take action on, I've seen, even I've seen it four or five times, like, okay, I know it's in the ID plan, we have to ask that again, so that working session's really powerful.
Thank you.
Next question? Come on, somebody else, there you go.
My name is Kristen Manos, I live in Mountain Free Water. Yeah, me too. I feel like this is a dumb question, but how long is a mayor's term?
So the mayor's term is elected for four years, however, since I was appointed, I am serving the last two years of our former mayor's four-year term.
Okay. Can you get reelected?
I can't, so this time around, I was appointed, since our former mayor had resigned, next time around in 2020, I have to run reelection, so I'll have to actually do a full, full outline, be on the ballot, be on the ballot, and get myself elected, and there is no limit in terms of being elected.
No term limits.
No term limits, so I plan to be here as long as March.
Okay, thank you.
That's a long time, that's a long time.
Mr. Cleveland?
She's got a second question.
Yeah, come on back, come on back.
But if Mr. Cleveland's going to still answer to your first question.
Actually, I was going to make the comment, simply that you might be surprised what the requirements are to be the council member or a mayor. There are two, as I'm aware of, it is one, to be a registered voter in College Place, and to have lived here for a year, that's it.
What about the age requirement?
You have to be over 18 to be a registered voter, but that's it.
Is she going to be our next council member?
She's got to move first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And be here a year.
Oh, that was it?
Oh, that was it. Okay, so I mean, some of you here, you know. Okay, so I mean, some of you here, you know, you can start to fill yourself on the ballot, except for the mayor.
Yeah, so just to, just because we're two weeks away from election night, the three of us, Lauren, Melody, and I, who are on the ballot this year, all of us are out of post. So we, there's not a ton of activity on the ballot at this point. However, over the last several years, when we've had various appointments, I was appointed four and a half years ago, Michael, and, oh, never mind, we've all been appointed. But then...
Is anyone here that was elected first?
Really? But most of us were appointed midterm, but recently, I guess just this year, is when we've had applications, when we hired Norma and Byron, was when all of a sudden we had multiple applications, which was very refreshing. It didn't carry over until people actually filing, or putting their names on the ballot, but at least they were showing interest and there's, we've been, the comments that we're receiving in those applications is that they're, that because we're doing such great things, they want to be part of this. And that does feel really good. But yeah, for taking this stuff to be on the ballot, I guess it's nice that they're not running against us, but I think that there's always a nice thing to provide our citizens with a choice, so.
I first ran in, excuse me, 1989, and I ran on the proposition that we should get a new city hall.
But to another point, especially to say another generation here, that you can do
this job.
Yep.
All it requires is to come and ask questions and understand it. If something to understand, just ask. You don't have to be an expert in any of this stuff. You have to ask the experts that we have here that we employ. So any of you, anyone, can do this job, or greater. You could be a legislator in the senate, or the state legislature here. You just need to be able to ask questions in there and enjoy.
So, you all recall earlier today, I said it didn't take a special skill to get here, so, other than, what you had to do, Marge said, above your city.
And if you often, I often see people sort of work their way up, is a good way to get experience. We have a lot of boards, and I know at least a couple of people who started out, not in this city, but they started on the planning commission, then they got elected to the council, then they got elected to the state house, and now they're in the state senate. And, you know, they may, I don't know if they're ever gonna try and go to DC or not, but that's sort of been the profession.
How many of you have served on the student council when you were...
How many of us have served on the student council, maybe young?
A lot.
There you go, see? There you go. Excellent. So it's no difference, it really is not.
Do you have one more question?
Same drama.
I have a question.
Alright.
So, where are you from? Oh, I'm Ethan Mercia. Oh, wow.
Yeah.
And I'm from College Place, while I recently moved here. And as a part of Mr. Anderson's government class, he assigned us an activism project. So I decided, for my activism project, I'd join a coalition. So I joined the Wawaala Rights Coalition, Immigration Coalition, Wawaala Immigration Rights Coalition. And I'm curious if they have made like any statements here, even though this is in College Place, do, is there any immigration coalitions here that might try and push something here?
We have not heard from anybody here. I understand the group is pretty mean getting together.
Oh, yeah.
Personally, I know a number of people that are participating in the coalition, and, but they have not come formally to the council to discuss any issues.
I know that they've worked, at least one representative, I believe, you can stop me if I'm wrong, has worked with our chief of police on a few immigration issues with law enforcement. So they're at least in communication in that way, but they haven't been here.
So there isn't an immigration coalition in College Place?
That's probably, the Wawaala one is...
It's just like a general...
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
Yep. But feel free to start one.
We did pass a resolution two years ago, of being a welcoming city, which was not really driven by immigration, it was driven by a hate crime in Wawaala against the synagogue, because I'm the one that suggested it, and that's what made me suggest it. But it does, it does play into the immigration thing, so we do have that.
Alright, well, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering on that. Alright, another question? Alright, step on up to podium.
So you're supposed to say your name and your, like, the city or the...
That's fine.
Okay, my name is Henry Clancy, and I live in Wawaala. I was curious about the public comments section, so like, people come up here and express something that, you know, is important to them. And now, do they do that to hopefully just like, I guess, raise awareness to you guys as a member of the city about something that's important to them, in hopes that if it's something that you guys aren't talking about, which likely, I mean, you were, obviously, with the trash issue, will you guys just talk about that again in your weekly meeting, and maybe think about putting that on the agenda as something to talk about? Or, I'm curious as to the steps after they bring an issue in the public comments, saying like, what's next for them?
So in the past, we've had people come in and want to try to engage, and it's not really a Q and A part. And so usually it goes to staff. It's usually something that can be handled to the staff issue, that either they want us to be aware of, or they somehow think that we're magically gonna fix it sometimes. But it's not really in our power, it's usually like, just a question what they got.
Yeah, I guess, well, I guess I would add that we've, in the past years, we've had people that have come up and had comments that have really made council aware of issues in this, in the community. And so as many times, it can be, somebody can come up here and read the weather forecast, you know, it really doesn't have to be whatever. But there have been times, and there have been emotional things, where people had pets that were disappearing, there were issues with garbage or whatnot. And so it's not an action item at that time, but it really focuses many times the council's awareness on these issues that are then followed up with city staff and can be pursued. And discussions follow sometimes, but no decisions, you know.
And I would just add to that, at any level, most of the people who come are paid to be here. You know, they're a consultant, they work for the garbage company, whatever. And so when someone who's a citizen, no one's paying them to come, and they come and say something, there's a lot of attention to that. Because it takes a lot to get somebody out of their house, up in front, speaking in a microphone, you know. And it's the same way at the legislature. I don't think they could let them do it at Congress, but in the state legislature, it's the same way. So, your voice can be really amplified. And you may have noticed that the public comment that we got tonight turned into questions, you know.
And it may not have been those specific questions, but, you know, I believe some of the questions you asked was specifically to address concerns from our citizen who did speak up, so it was really important that she did, so that this was the opportunity to address those. And, you know, all our meetings are open. And I do want to say though, that we do have one person here that attends almost every meeting, and she sits right back there at the back. And she is a faithful citizen who just comes and listens and learns, and we appreciate, even though sometimes she's the only one out there, other than staff, we truly appreciate you all coming out here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'm Colin Peterson. I'm sorry to say that I'm from Wawaala, but...
We are too.
So that's the right way to start it.
You can fix that, it's...
I used to live in College Place. I had a question about what it's like as a job, city council, like, how much time does it take, and what job requirements do you have? And what do you get paid?
It's all public record.
The big bucks. Oh, yeah.
I would say, I've been on the council for a little while, but the time commitment, we do get paid for this, it's a, I consider an honest amount, but it's one of these, and it's public record, as you said, it is interesting. As our society's gotten more complex, and there's more issues, and more government oversight, and perhaps some more pressures, our time commitment is quite significant. We can have meetings here that, you know, can run till nine or ten. We have workshops, they can go for several hours or more. There are tons of much special meetings. And there's a, there's a need for us to be involved in the community also, to go to events, to go to ribbon cutting, street opening, and show the flag, and so there is a significant time commitment, I would say.
We also have committees, like, there's Public Works Committee, Finance Committee, so transportation, so there are committees that look things over in more detail before they even come to the workshop, so.
There's not really a good number to tell you, because it kind of flexes too, and it's, yeah, depending on what we serve on, there's, but we're all involved in other things other than just being at this. But it's very part-time. Other cities will have, their council can be a full-time position, or at least they're paid thousands of dollars in New York, for instance. We do not get that. But, but yeah, here it's...
It's like three fifty one?
Three seventy five.
Three seventy five?
That's forty five hundred.
It's public record.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we get three seventy five.
And they can vote for a raise, but they can only vote for a raise to go into effect after their current term. They can vote for future raises where they might be the justice. They can't...
We should have voted for a man raised on the mayor before I came.
We did.
We did. We just did.
We made party.
Why am I complaining?
You used to get nine hundred.
So as you can see, so it is a modest amount, but we appreciate it, and the city's...
Yeah, it's really fun, I've been on for four and a half years, and it's allowed me to get involved in other things in the community that I didn't know really existed. And so being able to work with Wawaala city council members and the county commissioners on various boards, or just different things, you get a different view on everything that's going on, not just things that are happening in the city of College Place. I think when I was at Wawa and Wawa College back in the day, they, everyone, all the teachers and staff that were always encouraging us to get involved, and I, I feel like now I maybe took that too literally. But I also feel like giving back in this way, or serving in any capacity, this young man who's on the Immigration Rights Coalition, I feel like if you're not gonna get involved and try to help in any capacity, paid or not, if you're not participating or learning something, getting involved in that process, then you really don't have a place to complain either. So, I don't know that it's my free pass necessarily, but I typically ask a lot of questions, but I think that it's really important to try to understand the things that are going on, give back in a way that allows you to ask pointed questions to people that can make that change, but get involved.
I also find that it's really rewarding. For example, we now, if you live in College Place, you're part of the library district, and you can have a library card and go get library books. That's something that I've been agitating about ever since I got on the council, and now it's happened, it's so cool. So it's really rewarding to see stuff that you worked on become, become real.
One other really interesting thing here, I was initially just curious about the council meetings, I started coming, and I got a lot of information about just what was happening, like, what are they doing in the city over here? What is this? What is this project? What's going on? And it was just really interesting to me to be able to understand and know, like, the things that are coming up, understanding the reasons and why. And it's surprising how it's, how easily misunderstood a lot of the decisions are that are made here, because, you know, people hear, oh, there's a rate increase, why are they just giving us more rate increases? All they do is increase the rates, you know.
We're padding our wallets, is what they're doing.
But this is really interesting, and it's really, it's a really great feeling to be able to give back, I mean, comments, questions that I make, things that people bring in and talk about here, really does lead to change. It is like, surprising to me just how, how easily change can be made by presenting yourself, by asking questions.
Yeah, asking a question.
You know, a squeaky wheel does definitely increase. Especially if you happen to be, you know, one of the wheels.
Yay Broadway!
Right, yeah, yeah, I wasn't gonna say it, it's kind of a joke. Broadway is one of our worst streets, and I complain about it consistently, and the other half could do some work, but it's not as bad as it was. But we've got some pavement on it to shore up a lot of the bad stuff. Broadway is kind of just the south of Andys, if you've ever been over there. But squealing about it for a couple years, and we got some pavement over on top of it, and it's a lot better. And, you know, it doesn't have quite as much gravity towards the bottom of it, where you can just scoot out. Anyway, but that is something that, you know, I... Thank you.
So I hope those of you, both classes, I, Mike and I spoke earlier this morning, and it truly was a pleasure having your attention and being able to share with you. So thank you all for the invitation, thank you for coming this evening. Those of you in College Place that are registered to vote, don't forget, we've got the council members that would appreciate your vote. If you've got it, and again, if you're not, please do register to vote as soon as you are able to, and vote on every issue. I know some things are just not sexy, nobody really wants to hear about wastewater treatment, but it's, sure will be an issue when you can't flush your toilet. So, so please do participate in your cities, whether it's here in College Place, Wawaala, Mountain Free Water, they all deserve your, your attention, and they deserve what you can bring to them. So thank you all very much for being here, we appreciate it.
I'd like to have your thoughts and prayers tomorrow, because I'm having eye surgery. Thank you so much.
Alright, so do we have anything else for the good agenda?
Good to the word?
Good to the order? I'll have to do one of these things. Good to the, okay. Mr. Bumble, do you have a motion to adjourn? You have a motion to adjourn? Okay, second?
Yeah, second.
Alright, back to the set, which is faster than we use a chair.